To order, this is the regular meeting of the Common Council, City of Hudson, for Monday, February 2nd. And we have with us tonight Troop 213 Boy Scouts and Brian Johnson. And so I'm going to ask them to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I think we'll have you each come up here and you can come up to this microphone here and introduce yourself and then we'll kind of line you up along the side here. So come on up front, guys. Tell them your name and then line yourselves up across the front. Go ahead.
I'm Sam Brown.
I'm Rob Hackworthy.
Justin Tersteg.
Sean Hagan.
Eli Zens.
Luther Miller.
Katie School.
Fergum Knott.
Blake Monner.
Kevin Fisher.
Brian Johnson. All right, so guys, why don't you turn around and face the flag and lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming. Next, I'd like to introduce Chief Marty Jensen to do a citizen commendation. Chief Jensen's here and will tell you about it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight I'm here to present a citizens' commendation award to Daniel P. Quinn. On January 19th of this year, Mr. Quinn assisted one of my officers, James Wildman, with a very volatile situation involving a suicidal subject that was on the telephone. Mr. Quinn was able to calmly talk to this person who was in Watertown, Minnesota, and was able to keep him calm while Officer Wildman was able to get ahold of Watertown Police Department, give them the address, and was able to come forward and help this gentleman get the need, attention he needed. Excuse me. So what I want to do is I want to bring Mr. Quinn up here and present this award to him. Mr. Quinn, if you would come up. This is a citizen commendation award, certificate award to Daniel P. Quinn, and grateful for the recognition of your assistance to the Hudson Police Department officers in locating and calming a suicidal subject living in Watertown, Minnesota, on January 19th, 2009. Congratulations.
And next, we'll move on to the meeting and will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Knutson.
Here.
District One, Morsette.
Here.
District Two, Brokaw.
Here.
District Three, Bernard.
Here.
District Four, Wyland.
Here.
District Five, O'Malley.
Here.
District Six, Burchill.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present. If anyone here would like to address the council about an item not listed on tonight's agenda, this is your chance. You can come up to the lectern and introduce yourself with your name and address and speak on any issue that might come before the council at a future meeting or have an impact on the City of Hudson. Anyone like to speak? Next then, we have our consent agenda items. Will you please read those?
For the public hearing in regular meeting minutes of January 19th, 2009, and the closed session minutes of January 5th and January 19th, 2009, to approve claims for payment in the amount of $480,943.01. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request. To place on file the quarterly report of the city clerk and the community access board minutes of January 27th, 2009. That is all.
All right.
Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, roll call vote.
Morsette.
Yes.
O'Malley.
Yes.
Wyland.
Yes.
Burchill.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Brokaw.
Motion passes and the consent agenda is adopted. Next item is from the Plan Commission. Consider request by the Hendrix Group Incorporated doing business as Hometown Senior Living for an exception to locate an adult family home licensed by the Wisconsin Department of Health and Family Services at 1015 Crestview Drive within 2,500 feet of a community-based residential facility which is Comforts of Home. Community Development Director Dennis Darnold will give you some background on this. You've all got your issue, Denny.
And this is a request for an adult family home. Adult family homes are permitted by state statutes to win one and two family residential districts except for a situation where an adult family home is proposed within 2,500 feet of a community-based residential facility or another adult family home. A prospective operator of adult family home can request the city to grant an exemption to that 2,500 linear foot standard. This is the exemption that's being requested by the Hendrix Group. The committee recommendation, the Plan Commission recommends approval of the request by Hometown Senior Living for exception to the 2,500-foot spacing requirement from a community-based residential facility with the following conditions: that the operator shall maintain his state license, approved license for an adult family home per Wisconsin Statute Section 50.03.3, that the facility is occupied only by residents age 16 and over or has a disability per the definition of Americans the Disabilities Act or the Fair Housing Amendment Act. A change in the license will automatically require the exception to be reconsidered for approval by the City of Hudson. Per Wisconsin Statute Section 62.23, parent I-9, the city may make a review and make a determination as to the effect of adult family home on the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the City of Hudson and that no on-street parking be allowed on Crestview Drive for the use of the property as an adult family home.
Thank you.
If there's any questions, I may answer for the Common Council. Then Catherine's also here tonight, City Attorney Catherine McKittrick, also be able to answer any questions for you.
Mr. O'Malley.
We have quite a few people here in the audience. And the petitioners are here also, I see. I would like to hear from them before making a motion.
I think that's reasonable. Can you give me an idea of how much time you'd like to spend and we'll set some rules for that? At the Plan Commission, we took, or we had public comment for a little over an hour until no one else wanted to speak. We tried to limit to about three minutes each. How much time would you like to spend tonight? How about I suggest 20 minutes at the max? Does that seem reasonable?
For both sides.
Well, I think the applicant has a relatively brief statement and probably needs nothing close to 20 minutes. Is that right?
Ten at the most.
Ten at the most.
We'll have some questions that were raised from the last meeting I'd like to ask and other members may also, so if we could do that after the 20-minute period.
We can do that. Will that fit with your timeframe? Would you like to make a brief statement now and then maybe Mary will have to stay and answer the questions if you have to leave?
That would be fine.
All right. He's got a flight to catch, so without objection, why don't we let him make his statement and then if you have to leave, you can leave. Why don't you come up and introduce yourself representing the applicant?
Hello, Greg Hendricks from the Hendrix Group. I serve as Vice President and Chairman of the company requesting the exemption. I'll just get into my statement. Members of the City Council, members of the Plan Commission that are here tonight, first off, want to thank you for your time and deliberation in this matter. We at Hometown Senior Living recognize the sensitivity and the emotions both that go along with this issue among some neighbors and community members that are here tonight. We want to thank Mayor Knutson, members of the Plan Commission here tonight, and the City Council for your professionalism and your due diligence and respect to the law in this matter, first off. Before I get into the heart of the matter, which I think we're all here for tonight, I want to speak to some misinformation that is semi-related and may not be related directly to the 2,500-foot exemption, but we sat for about an hour and a half and had a lot of misinformation given, untruths, and so on and so forth that we would like to publicly clear up. Many unfactual, untrue, and unfair statements were made against Mary Hendricks and Hometown Senior Living that were said at the Plan Commission meeting and in the Afton Care letter that some of you received last Monday by some members of the community. While mostly unrelated to the 2,500-foot exception, we want to make sure that the City of Hudson and the members of the community are accurately informed about the integrity of a new business owner in their community. I've got three main issues that I just want to hit on. I'll be brief. I don't want to take up too much of the City Council's time. One, she represented herself as Afton Care when she started, point-blank. Mary never made any such comments to any of the neighbors, plain and simple. Two, Mary stole or lured residents from Afton Care. The notion was presented. In fact, family members were advised by the State of Minnesota Healthcare Inspector to move their loved ones from Afton Care because of the pending allegations of resident neglect and financial exploitation. She never lured or asked them. She was in fact approached by the family members and the residents themselves and the family members were advised by the state inspector to remove their loved ones from this facility. Afton Care, whom one of the neighbors, Mr. Todd Erkstein, referred to as exemplary and reputable last week, is currently under serious state investigations regarding these resident neglect and exploitation matters. This information is public and final determinations will be made shortly for anyone who wishes to see this information. Third, Mary may or may not be part of these specific investigations. This was actually in the Afton Care letter, again, that many of you received. That was written by a member of Afton Care, in fact, one of their owners. In fact, Mary served, the capacity that she served in was as Marketing Director with Afton Care and had no direct care responsibilities with any of the residents. The very reason that she chose to leave Afton Care was to protect her reputation and integrity as a healthcare professional. Lastly, I'd just like to add, much of the information given by the representatives of Afton Care to the neighbors in meetings that they assumedly had is in fact violation of employee and resident privacy rights as contained in the Healthcare Information Privacy Practices Act, commonly known to, or referred to as HIPAA, and is in violation of retaliation clause in the Minnesota State Healthcare laws protecting employees of healthcare providers under investigation. So that being said, I just want to hit on, again, I'll be brief, the heart of the matter, the 2,500-foot exemption that we're requesting here tonight. I want to reiterate, I mentioned last week that I felt like we got outside of the scope of the 2,500-foot rule. A lot of the information we discussed was, is, and is, the responsibility of the state licensing agency, not here tonight. The issue of adult family home legality is not at issue here tonight, and that's what we spent a lot of time talking about last week. That's already been decided, as Mayor Knutson said, as the FHAA Fair Housing Amendment Act, the American Disabilities Act, and numerous Wisconsin State Court and District Courts pass precedent, specifically K Care case in the Wisconsin State Appeals Court, has already decided. So the issue of adult family home operating in residences in our communities is not at issue. That's already been determined and is legal. The issue that we have and why we're here tonight is to request a 2,500-foot exemption. In fact, if it wasn't for the 2,500-foot rule, if we would have chosen to purchase a house another 800 feet away from Comforts of Home, we wouldn't be here. We are legally entitled to do so. So I just wanted to remind neighbors, the City Council, again, I think the City Council is already aware of this, as Mayor Knutson alluded to last week. So I just encourage you to remember that just because you issued the 2,500-foot exemption doesn't mean we're free-to-go willy-nilly. The state licensing department still has to give us the license, which we've already begun the process and we fully intend on complying with all state regulations and licensing So that brings us to the actual 2,500-foot exemption. What is required or what is the 2,500-foot exemption even there for? That was a question that I had in the first place and I had to do a little bit of research The FH, let me give you this from the FHAA, again, the Fair Housing Amendment Act states, "You may not refuse a reasonable accommodation in rules, policies, practices, or services when such accommodations may be necessary to afford such person equal opportunity to use and enjoy a dwelling." I think we've already established that that is the case here. That's the federal law. So the 2,500-foot rule, I think the best illustration of why this rule came into play is stated by the State of Wisconsin Supreme Court, Appeals Court, and I'll quote, "The purpose of this statute, we explained, was to restrict the density of CLAs or community living arrangements in residential neighborhoods in order to preserve the established character of the neighborhood so that," and I'll emphasize, "the residents of the facility," not the neighbors, "the residents." They're here, they're trying to protect the residents, the people that live in these properties, so they don't have to live in institutionalized settings, "so that the residents of the facility could live in a normal residential setting in a manner similar to other residents of the area rather than an institutionalized setting." So that's the reason of the 2,500-foot rule. I just ask that you keep that in mind here as you vote tonight. So based on my research, based on the Plan Commission's statements and statements made by Mayor Knutson, it seems clear to me that when you boil it down, what we're looking at here and what we should boil it down to within the 2,500-foot rule are three things. There's only three things that you really have legally to basis, to base a denial or to not issue an exemption, which are, one, if it, based on what I just read, if it infringes on the resident's right to live in a non-institutionalized setting, reference the K Care case, Wisconsin Court of Appeals. Two, it places undue burden on, or expense on, the city, not the neighbors, but the city itself. That's Wisconsin State Statute 62 dot 23. Or three, it poses a public health or safety threat. Okay? Those are the, and again, I referenced the precedent and the references to these three instances. Outside of those three instances, the state leaves everything else up to the state licensing board or agency. So can I say to be brief, to summarize, members of the City Council, after much deliberation on this issue, I think based on the evidence that the Plan Commission gave, the answer here is clear. I do hope that you will save the taxpayers of Hudson some time and some money in this issue and agree with federal, state, local precedent and the Plan Commission's recommendation on this issue and vote to issue the 2,500-foot exception tonight. Aside from the legal aspect, I ask that the City Council considers what the right thing to do is in this matter, for our aged loved ones' sake and for the sake of our civic responsibility to our growing elderly population. As our parents and loved ones continue to age and eventually we ourselves become seniors, we would like the opportunity, the equal opportunity, to live in de-institutionalized settings and homes and neighborhoods much like we all live in now. Thank you.
Thank you. The council have any questions before we go forward?
Will Mary be speaking also?
Well, I don't think she has a prepared opening statement, if that's what you mean.
Okay.
But I suspect that she'll be, I mean, this is a, they can choose to have anyone represent their company and you just heard from their spokesman at this point.
I'll just reserve till the question, period.
Okay. I think maybe I'd like to give a little bit of background if that's appropriate. In the City of Hudson, we won't discriminate against people because they're disabled or for other reasons, and that's pretty well clear and well accepted. The rub tonight comes because there are conflicting principles at stake. One is that nondiscrimination against individuals with handicaps or the elderly or other kinds of medical problems, and I really don't think there's very much debate about the fact that we'd like to have them living in homes. There's pretty broad agreement. The conflicting principle is property rights and local control, and property rights are really the basis for all our zoning laws. And yes, the federal courts, the US Congress, the state courts, and the state legislature have made a series of laws and rulings that have essentially taken control over this decision out of our local hands. And I'll tell you, for everyone sitting up here, that rubs a little bit, but it is the fact. And so as you go forward, understand that, you know, back from the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the Fair Housing Act that followed it in '68 with amendments later, and then the Americans with Disabilities Act in the '80s and early '90s, that there have been a series of decisions made and then court cases following that have essentially determined that no matter what your zoning says, an adult family living arrangement is just like a family. So anywhere a family could live, an adult family living, or home, could be placed. You may not like that. You might object to it. Some of the council members here undoubtedly will. At the Plan Commission, we had a long debate over this. I've gotten advice from the city attorney. We've talked with the attorneys from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities about it. I've consulted with other mayors who have dealt with it, and that's just the facts. And I said at the Plan Commission that if anyone could show me a precedent where a municipality or a group of neighbors or a city council or anything of the sort objected to this and successfully fought it through any means, then we could look at that. And I know Mr. O'Malley brought up at the Plan Commission a proposed means using our city code, and maybe we'll hear some more about that tonight, but I have yet to see one that was employed successfully to stop it. There is no local control for this. And the statement that were it not for the 2,500 feet, it would just have opened, we already have several such facilities within the City of Hudson and for the most part, the neighbors don't even know they're there. We've had no complaints and from the outside, you wouldn't really know it. Now, it's hard to be the bearer of news that you don't want to hear, but think of us as more the messengers than the decision-makers. Essentially, that 2,500-foot rule that still exists in state law has been more or less determined to be invalid. It's there for the purpose at this point of bringing forward a hearing, but no city is able to deny it, from it happening without being sued, and when sued, will lose. With that as kind of a preface, would you give some brief comments or however much time you want to take?
Well, I think both the descriptions that the applicant gave and the mayor's description of the state of the law is essentially correct. Given, I mean, federal courts in Wisconsin have held that the 2,500-distance rule is not enforceable with respect to facilities that provide care for disabled, and that's because the Americans with Disabilities Act and the Fair Housing Amendments Act supersede both state law and local law. So that it's true, the council finds itself in a situation where there's this law on the books, but it's essentially unenforceable absent some sort of compelling facts that have never been brought forward in any kind of case law and that to my, in my reading of the Plan Commission minutes, have not been brought forward in this case. There is rationale for the law. You know, you may or may not agree with it, but there is, and that's, I think the mayor said it correctly, that's the state of the law. And if you, if the council denies the exception, it is acting inconsistently, in my opinion, with the federal court rulings on this matter with the ADA and the FHAA, and it opens itself up to litigation, and if the applicants are successful litigation, they can recover attorney's fees. So, and I don't, I mean, there are good reasons for the law. You may not agree with it, but it's not just a threat. So anyway, if anyone has questions, you know, please ask, but I do think there's little to no discretion on the part of the council in this case.
Catherine, I do have a question in regards to the three points that you brought up in your memo, and I would like a little more clarification.
Sure.
On each of those three.
Um.
You know which one?
I don't know which, I'm looking at my memo.
You got the last paragraph.
That, well, that last paragraph actually is only if it were found that this adult family home does not serve the disabled. If it serves the disabled, then under the ADA and the Fair Housing Amendments Act, in my opinion, the 2,500-foot distance rule does not apply. But the last two paragraphs on my memo were, if it did not serve the disabled, I think even under the Hudson City zoning code, it would be difficult to deny this use based on the criteria in the zoning code, i.e., three to four adults can constitute a family. It's a residential use under the city zoning code, in my opinion.
Your number two, your statement, what impact, if any, will have on the surrounding area? It's going to have an impact on the other facility.
Well, remember, we need to back up. This doesn't apply at all if the facility is serving the disabled, which based on the information presented, it is. The court has held, the two Wisconsin courts, one federal, one state, have held 2,500-distance rule does not apply.
Okay, that's the clarification.
So basically, last paragraph doesn't really apply based on the information presented by the applicant.
Thank you.
So based on...
So, based on what you've read, we really don't have to vote on this at all?
Well, they need the exception. Well, there is a purpose in that, they need to be a valid permissible use, and because this law exists on the state books, they need an exception from that distance rule.
Yes. They do need action on our part, because the state law requires it, which gives the impression that we have discretion. But our discretion has been removed by the higher courts. It leaves it a little bit circular in that they won't get licensed unless they get the So, they're, the state's controlling it, and yet the state is waiting for us to give the exception because the 2,500-foot rule has never been removed from the books. This isn't that much different than, for example, until very recently, a few months ago, we had a mandatory retirement age on our municipal code that had long since been invalidated by state and federal courts. Had we chosen to enforce that, we would have been quickly sued and would have lost. And it's a similar thing, but yet, for years, that had been the case, and we'd never cleaned it up. The state legislature has laws on the state books that are very much the same way. Should this be changed? It should be changed, yes. I think, Randy, one of the findings that the Plan Commission sought to make was, will this facility serve the disabled? And one of the questions is, are senior residents, without any other disability other than they need assistance with personal care each day, does that fit the definition of disability? And I believe that the situation is yes. The applicant says yes, the definitions that we were provided say yes, and so, the answer is, yes, under the Americans with Disabilities Act, need to make a reasonable accommodation. And it's reasonable as long as the definition for that is, there's not a...
Undue burden on the city.
Undue burden, either administratively or financially.
And public health safety hazard.
The public health safety hazard, we discussed at some length. We can certainly talk about that some more here, and you can ask, Denny's done some further research, there were some unanswered questions, because we had not consulted with the police chief or the fire chief at that time to get their opinion, but we have since. And the other part you should realize is that denial on the basis of a safety concern has also been largely invalidated, because the state law contains a provision that, upon approval, you may have a hearing about safety issues after 11 months, between 11 and 13 or 14 months, you can have a hearing to go over the actual safety concerns based on actual experience. Prior to that, the assumption is that the state will deal with safety concerns, and we have to assume that they're doing their role, fulfilling that role, and that it is a safe facility.
Could we hear the opinion from the chiefs?
Definitely.
I talked to Jim Frye, and I talked to the police chief, Jesse.
Yeah, Dave, Inspector Kupic and I visited about this with Andy Darnold this morning, and I don't foresee this to be any different than a family living there, a family of four, as far as vehicles or access or whatever, I don't foresee this to be a problem. It's actually going to get inspected once a year by the fire inspector, whereas residential doesn't get inspected. So, I think it'll, I don't foresee it to be a problem.
The questions of turning vehicles around, was that an issue at the end of the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, we're able to make that cul-de-sac with our fire apparatus. Oh, the ladder's a little tough, but, but there are access gates there as well that could be open and make a thorough fire if we needed to.
Jim, as part of your discussion of this, did you go to the subject property? Did you walk over the property?
I had been there many times before when I was reading meters, so. I didn't, I didn't actually go inside and that type of thing. But, I mean, as far as fire access and everything, it would be no different than any other residents in that neighborhood.
So, everything access from the street is no problem?
Right.
Okay.
Inspector Kupic has not gone into that, nor can he, until after 11 months of review, or is that my understanding?
Well, it'll be up to the licensing, the state licensing.
Doesn't the facility have to be ADA-compatible?
My understanding is that that's a licensing issue, and that residents can request accommodations to the operator, and the operator needs to make them. But again, that's not the city's issue.
The request from Health and Social Service will come through if this is approved, and at that time, it'll be inspected.
Thank you, chief. Anyone else have more questions for him? Now, I guess I'll point out that three of the six of you were at most of that Plan Commission meeting and probably heard a lot of the comments from the public. Those that weren't, are you comfortable with the 20-minute part?
Sure.
20 minutes? All right, let's take 20 minutes. Why don't we limit to two to three minutes each? And whoever wants to be first? Is there anyone here who wants to speak in favor of the application? Any member of the public other than the applicant that wants to speak in favor of the application? All right, so we'll take 20 minutes from the rest. Is there anyone who wants to speak on that? I'm going to ask three times, second time. Does anyone want to speak in opposition to this application for an exception to the 2,500-foot rule? Step right up, introduce yourself.
Tammy Erskine, I live at 1019 Crestview, just next door to the proposed facility. Thank you for hearing our concerns, or my concerns. We're here today to talk about an exception to the 2,500-foot rule. And I'm asking the Plan Commission to see the 2,500-foot rule as a tool that prompts review, not as a guideline to approve or disapprove a facility. I'm asking you to see it as a spacer to promote appropriate dispersal of adult family homes so that neighborhoods don't become institutionalized neighborhoods. Adult family homes will continue to increase in residential neighborhoods rapidly, from some of the things I've read. I tend to find these operations as lucrative commercial ventures that are operating in residential zones, to the total disregard of the neighbors being affected. We did cite to the Plan Commission that there was a journal article citing that property values are decreased when these type of facilities go in. So I just wanted to make the Plan Commission aware of that fact. I also did some research and found that there is a new Wisconsin property tax exemption law that states in 2005 that benevolent facilities, which an adult family home is considered a benevolent facility, that they can claim exemption to property taxes. And my question to you is, how is that going to affect neighbors? I know I don't want my property taxes going up anymore, so I'm wondering where that burden might lie. What I'm asking of the city council is really, for some time to review, I know that there was issues with parking and safety issues for us up there. I don't know if the fire chief has been up there since the driveway's been cut in half, it's not a, it's not a complete circle any longer, so I don't know if he's aware of that. Maybe take a look at Hendrix's business plan. She's a new business, she was incorporated in November of 2008, and a week later, she moved in, currently two residents right now. And I'm also asking the Plan Commission to take a look at that Wisconsin property tax exemption law, and tell me as a neighboring, and all of us in the neighborhood, how that's going to affect us if that law is in fact true, and if it's something that the Hendrix Group can claim. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up?
I'm Trina Olpats, I live at 1131 Hazelcrest Drive. I am the president of the Hazelcrest Association, and I've gotten a lot of phone calls, and I'm representing our association, and all the phone calls that I have received, nobody would like this to go through. I am very sensitive, I do understand that people can choose where they want to live and how they want to be taken care of. I do have a lot of concerns in regards to this, especially the traffic flow. Yes, you know, you can turn a fire truck around in the cul-de-sac, you know, but what about the people that are living there? There are some concerns about ambulances, how often will help need to be called to the house? How often is outside help going to be called to the house? I have little kids, and they like to run around in the summertime, and if there's going to be a large traffic flow to their home, that's a major concern for me, and for the safety of my family, and to the other people in the neighborhood. And then, I have a concern on who is going to be monitoring the residents that are there, is it going to be a cap at four? But, will probably be with the health inspection people that go in there, but that's not the concern that I have. And then with the exemption to the property taxes, that will greatly affect the city of Hudson. And I think that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, councilpeople, how are you? Gary Borgland, 1427 Cryer Crest Drive. I think we're probably, I was at the Planning Commission meeting and realized that they thought a long time about sending this on to the council, and I, how I look at it is that I don't think we're in a position where you can actually deny this, approving it. However, what I'd ask you to do is consider a couple of things. And for the benefit of the people that weren't at the Planning Commission, and for the people in the audience who really don't understand what kind of business this is, this Hendrix Group is a for-profit corporation. Currently, if they are approved for four members, their revenue is $44,000 a month. The 2,500-foot rule, if I understand it, was created to prevent competing homes from being right next to each other. Within 2,500 feet of their approved, approved, of the home that they're trying to be approved is Comfortive Home, which provides quality care for about $3,000 a month. So I'd ask, I mean, before we get too carried away about a wonderful thing they're doing for our community, there are other alternatives for seniors in this, in this area. The other thing I'd like the council to consider is that in 19, I'm sorry, in 2006, there's a gentleman that bought a piece of property at 1,005 Crestview Drive, he paid $276,000 for the lot. This lot is right next door to this property we're talking about. He then built a home, currently, and I don't think he's here tonight, and I didn't even know who he was, and I only know this from some information I was doing on another project, currently, the mortgage is $900-plus thousand on that piece of property. Now, the city council has to think that if that guy cannot sell his property for $900,000, I would think he's going to look to the city and say, I had to disclose to the potential buyer of my property that next door is a senior facility, and because of that, the value is not what it was. Now, I think our economy alone has beat up the prices of our homes between 10 and 15, and maybe 25 percent in some areas. Now we have the city considering approving a home that'll even drive the prices down further. I'd like to, just for a second, speak to the other two homes, homes similar to this that are approved in the city. They both just happen to be in neighborhoods where the average home price is $150,000 to $225,000. Now, we, the city council has to think that if you're in a neighborhood where the houses are worth $700,000 to $900,000, it's going to have more of a negative effect on the value of the home. So what I'd like to do is, is may, have the city council think about this. In their opening statement tonight, they said that Mary Hendrix may or may not have some potential interest in the disagreement with her former employer. I think the city and the residents would be harmed if tonight, they made a decision to go ahead and approve this. I would ask that the council would delay their vote till we really find out what the real story is, and find, maybe she is involved or isn't involved, but I'd ask them to delay and look at that. My last point I'd like to make is I really do think that there are current ordinances on the city books that refer to the nuisance issue. Where if a current city resident feels like their rights have been infringed on, or they're bothered with traffic, or noise, or whatever it would be, I think either the city needs to take a look at the current ordinance and maybe not vote on this tonight, delay the vote, take a look at the issues I've brought up, and bring it up at another time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Could we have her interject on any of those points?
Sure.
Lights fresh in our heads?
Okay.
Yes.
Dispute with former employer, absolutely irrelevant, has nothing to do with the land use, it's just not relevant. The law, ADA, Fair Housing Accommodations Act prohibit discrimination against the disabled, and require the city to provide reasonable accommodation in its rules, policies, ordinances, and so forth. The city cannot discriminate, and that's just the fact. And the law on the books, through the courts, is that this 2,500-foot exception is not valid when applied to an adult family home serving the disabled. So that is the reality you are dealing with, and that's just the law.
A quick interjection on the tax exempt, is that considered a hardship for us, if it owes?
No, that's irrelevant also. This is, this is a for-profit.
Right.
So I don't think that even applies, but if the state chooses to exempt property from taxation, that's the state's, that's a state law. It's similar to churches in a residential neighborhood, to nonprofit schools. So that, what you're looking at is a land use decision, and I guess you may not want to hear it, but the law is that this exception is not enforceable against a facility that serves the disabled.
While we're at it, the question of traffic flow is one for you to consider in your decision, up to a certain point, as to the effect of whether there's a safety concern. But as we discussed before, safety concern is one that largely isn't ours to make, because it's been preempted by state and federal laws. But just taking that piece, one of the considerations was the applicant agreed that there would be no on-street parking, so that helped alleviate our concern about clogging at the north end of the street. The fact that there's a gate halfway along the ridge there is a fact. At the time that that was done years ago, the developer and maybe some residents came to the council, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Denny, and successfully made the case that turning it into a cul-de-sac wasn't a safety issue, because you could swing the gates open, and for that reason, that gate's remained there. I recall when Jacobson's Woods wanted to do the same thing, and the council said no. So, I mean, if that's really an issue, understand the gate could go away. In fact, we could even be forced to make the gate go away. If you take the approach that traffic is such a problem, because that gate's there, that we can't make an accommodation to them, then understand that we may be forced into taking the gate away, which I don't think is really what we want. So when the chief says it's not a problem, they can get in, turn the big trucks around, and if not, they can open the gate, I think you have to kind of take that on its face, that for safety vehicles, access is... that for safety vehicles access isn't an issue. Now, if you disagree with that, then we can try to ascertain if the facts are different. But I think that's the facts as they are before us. I'm not sure about this disclosure of proximity that were you to sell your home, Mr. Borgland said that and we heard that at the Plan Commission too, that were you to sell your home, they'll have to disclose that this is next door. I'm not certain that that's the case.
Yeah, truth and housing, you have to disclose. If you didn't disclose what's going on next door to you, you certainly could be held liable.
You know that as a fact?
Nor does it that, truth and housing.
For example, the home next door to me is owned by a church and so on. There was no disclosure of that to me. It's never been a problem, but I just.
Well, owned by a church, it's owned by a church with one family living in this house. I think if it's anything other than that, it's a licensed facility and you have to disclose to the property owner.
I think that's the case.
I'm not aware of that. The state of Wisconsin has a real estate condition report in which you have to report conditions of the house or the property, physical conditions. In any event, the law is what it is. I'm not aware of any kind of disclosure requirement, but in terms of applying this 2,500-foot distance, courts have held it's not enforceable against this type of facility.
Yeah, this is the type of, yeah, this is the type of facility it was written.
We've explained the conflict and the state law was on the books. The ADA and the Fair Housing Amendment Act supersede that state law and the courts have made decisions since then affirming that, that the 2,500-foot distance cannot be applied to this type of facility.
Are there others in the audience who would like to address the council?
I do have a question.
Yes.
For attorney.
Why don't you come up and introduce yourself and so on?
Thank you. I'm Todd Erskine, 1019 Crestview Drive. I live right next door and have lived there for over six years now. The question that I have for our attorney is, the case law that's been laid, I guess where I'm going with this is what is compelling about the council saying yes to this property when their own statement says, you know, if we just move 800 feet away, we don't even have to come here? Well, my question to them is, why not just move 800 feet away? There are hundreds of homes for sale in Hudson right now. Apparently, any of them, more than 2,500 feet away from Comforts of Home or another facility or another adult family home or community living arrangement, they needn't apply for any exemption at all. What I'm asking the council is to set the precedent, make it here that it is applied in the future. So I guess what I'm asking is that there's a 2,500-foot rule on the books for the state of Wisconsin. A circuit court in Chicago held that it's not applicable. Well, where is that whole, have we all read it? Is it because there was, there was no other house for sale in this area? Is it the only house that was available to this? I don't know. I don't know what the, what the ruling was or what it was based around. But what I do know, there is a law on the books. It says 2,500 feet. That's written by the fathers of the state of Wisconsin and in this room, we have, well, the parents of the town of Hudson. So I'm asking the council to make a precedent here or at least listen to what all of the members of this community surrounding this facility are saying. We're all saying no. And what we're asking is that the council stand up and fight for our rights, even though it doesn't quite seem that anyone is exactly clear as to what our rights are in this situation. So, am I for adult family homes? I am, all right? Am I for affordable senior housing that's in the community? I absolutely am. But there is a law on the books that applies to this situation and it's a 2,500-foot rule. If there were no other houses available for the Hendrix Group to move into, then I would, boy, okay, I could see making an exception to the rule. But the fact of the matter in this situation is there are hundreds of homes in Hudson for sale right now. What's compelling to make an exception to this particular home? That's what I don't understand in this case. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? Going once, twice, three times?
Okay.
Can you answer that?
Well, I didn't hear a question to me. I heard a lot of statements, so I, there's, what the law says is they have a right to locate in this home or in this area. They don't have to show a compelling need, just as if anyone else moving into this house would not need to show that there's a compelling need. If there was a business moving into a commercial area that was permitted under the law, they would not have to show a compelling need to be there. What the law says is that this facility can be here and the 2,500-foot distance requirement does not apply. That's what the law says.
Even if it's outside that 25, even if there's another place outside the 25, it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
For me.
Hudson is to not discriminate against people with disabilities. They, like anyone else, have a right to purchase a home or live in a place if they can pay for it, just like anybody else. They don't need to show a compelling need. That is the purpose behind the law. And the need for the law is kind of shown in this process because it's a difficult thing often for a neighborhood to accept. But the fact is in Hudson, there are homes like this. There have not been complaints and the facts presented by your fire chief, your planner, do not identify any public safety or other reasons for denying this use. So the last part was a little more editorial than legal, but to help try to understand the premise for the law.
Okay. Lori?
Not to muddy the waters, but I did speak with a couple neighbors from the area. They're not here tonight. They're not opposed to this. I don't, I just don't want people to think everyone has signed some petition. I mean, some of your neighbors are okay with it, so I think we just have to be careful with statements that nobody wants this there.
There was a.
Not that it matters a great deal in relation to the law.
That brought up an interesting question I had earlier. They talked about the Hazelcrest Association. I assume, I would expect that if this was approved, that they would become part of that association and pay dues to it. I assume you have dues to that organization?
There would be.
Yeah, so this house would be part of that organization?
Hazelcrest is on the other side of the gate.
Oh, it is, oh.
No, that's, that's not true. That's not true.
Well, why don't we have Ms. Olpats answer it since she was, is the president of the association?
When the Hazelcrest Association was created, there were relatives of the builder that chose not to be a part of the association. The Hazelcrest Association goes up to that property and there are three houses in the entire neighborhood that are not a part of the association. Any of those three houses can choose to be a part of the association if they want to. And I would like all of them to, but you know, that is up to them. So it's not on the other side of the gate. It is right up to that property and it's in, it's in the covenants and it's a personal choice if they would like to be a part of that or not.
Can I, let me make a ruling here unless someone objects to it. Are you ready for the council to deliberate without further input from the audience or do you want me to continue to take questions and input? I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask the council this. Are you ready to cut that off so it's council deliberation or shall we continue on with that or where are you at?
30 seconds.
I have some questions of Mary that I need to ask.
I'd be happy to hear what Todd has to say.
And then are we done?
Yeah.
Because at some point it needs to.
30 seconds, Mr. Erskine.
The rub here is not that, to me anyway, and to many of us, is not that disabled seniors are moving into the neighborhood. That's not the rub. The frustrating thing and what seems wrong to us is that a business, a corporation, is moving a group of seniors into a home in our neighborhood and churning a tidy profit from it. That's the thing that's the rub here. It's, their, a company is coming into our neighborhood and they're going to take from our neighborhood, what are they, what are they going to give back? There's no law, there's no, there's nothing that says they have to give anything back. It's a residential neighborhood. It's not residentially used though, once a corporation has it. And you know, I just, that's the rub, you know? It's, it's just that fact. It's become a profit center rather than a home. A group of people moving into a home and bringing someone in from the outside to help care for them, that's a completely different thing. And who could object to that? The other end of, or the other side of this coin is what we're seeing here tonight. Thanks again.
Thank you. Ms. Hendrix, could you come up and answer some questions from the council? Thank you. Mr. O'Malley?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Hendrix, I'm, your petition before us tonight has to do with the location of the property and its use. And I'd like to confine myself strictly to that, not the other issues that you've been hearing earlier this evening. I do this to have some findings of fact at the urging of a member of the Plan Commission who contacted me the day after the Plan Commission meeting urged me to do so. So as a consequence of that, I have talked to the state. I've talked to the people in the Department of Health and Family Services, people you know, the surveyor for this area, Brenda, who you've spoken with many times. I think the state calls, there's positive surveyors, they're like field inspectors. I've also spoken with Julia Langworthy, who is the person who handles these permits, as I'm sure you, you also know you've spoken with her. About the property, I've been in it many, many times over the years. I know it intimately. In fact, the last time I was in it was last November when the owner asked me to help move some articles out to make room for you. So I've been in it quite recently. And I have some questions about it. Currently, you have two residents, I believe you said. One is, I think, stage one or perhaps stage two Alzheimer's patient and the other one's confined to a wheelchair. Is that, is that correct?
I'm no longer going to comment on the healthcare conditions of my residents because as my son pointed out, that's a violation of HIPAA regulations. I'm not, I just can't talk about my residents.
Well, I'm not going to ask you any more questions, but just for clarification, you are not a medical person. You do not offer medical care. There is no doctor-patient confidentiality here, but I won't ask any more questions about that.
I'm a mandated, I am held on any kind of healthcare workers, no matter what level of certification you have or.
Okay, I don't care to argue.
You are, you are held under the HIPAA regulations.
I'm not going to start arguing with you about it. You did say at the Plan Commission meeting that you had these two people and you described the nature of their condition. Why this concerns me is that, you know, you, you do have an ADA, you have a ramp, a wheelchair ramp at the main entrance currently. But the, the house, for those who, we don't have a floor plan of it, but the house is essentially, is it fair to say kind of U-shaped, almost B-shaped or it is long and narrow, essentially? Am I misrepresenting the house by describing it that way?
The house is, is long. It's not U-shaped.
The, well, it, it does, anyway. The north end of the house, when you come into the house, there is the, the central entrance is in the central middle part of the house and there is the kitchen nearby and the dining room and the living room. Once you get past that to the north end of the house, you're in a very narrow hallway. I would say it's fair to say that you could not turn around a wheelchair with a person in it in that space. Is that incorrect? The hallway there is 36 inches wide.
Turn them in a circle or?
Yeah, to be able to turn them around and face them in the other direction in a hurry. If, if there were a fire to occur in the house and a person were in a wheelchair in the north half of that house, I don't believe that person could get out of that house. The north doorway has no ramp. It is too narrow for, my own personal experience, it is too narrow for a wheelchair to get through and it does not even empty out to the outside. You are then stuck in a sun porch between the house and the garage and you have to negotiate another narrow door.
You can remove a wheelchair whether it's going forward or backwards, so you don't have to turn them around to make them go.
Interior safety concerns regarding whether it's ADA accessible or not are going to be up to the licensing agency and you already talked with them. I mean, that's, that's their decision to make. And just like we're having an application for an exception, if it doesn't meet that, then you know, that's, that's their determination and not ours.
I spoke with Brenda about that very issue and her response was that she is not going to even look at this application and has not looked at this application and will not do so unless this city invites her to do so by approving this. So I would say that while that is a very wide, we've heard very wide arguments against this tonight, I think they are not particularly deep. I think it is incumbent upon this city council to look after the welfare of the city of Hudson and I believe that you have, as Jim mentioned, he's, he's been to that house. There's no problem from the street side, but if you go around to the other side of the house, you have an open yard that anyone can go over the edge of and wind up very far down the cliff with some great bodily harm. I would say that if we were to agree to pass this without further investigation, when that accident does occur, Alzheimer's patients are, they are said to wander, that's a euphemism. In stage two, they're actually, my experience is, they're actually trying to escape to get back home. And I could easily see a patient of that nature who is ambulatory going over that cliff to great harm to themselves and to, in the resulting lawsuit, families to great harm to the city. I would say that the third reason for denying this petition having to do with public health and safety has to do with the safety concerns of the people inside the house and also the concerns of protecting the citizens of Hudson from this kind of harm from the resulting lawsuit. You have got patients who are in private care, private pay, averaging a little over $10,000 a month. Obviously, they come from families with deep enough pockets to hire an attorney to sue us forever if we allow this to go through knowing, as we do, that this can result in great harm to the residents of this house. This house is in a dangerous location. There is no chance of putting up a restrictive fence, excuse me, restrictive fence. DNR is not going to allow that on that ridgeline. So anyone can go over that ridge at any time and resulting, I would assume, in death or certainly very great bodily harm. If we allow that to go through, we become complicit in the resulting harm and the resulting lawsuit. I would say, I would argue that it's up to us to at least take the step of either delaying or denying this application until we know where we stand with this.
Well, could I just offer a few comments?
Before you start, let me, let me, let me just say one thing. The similarities between the key case here, the Economwalk, Economwalk Residential Programs Incorporated versus the city of Greenfield are really striking. And I read that it was, it was along a river, steep slopes, no sidewalks. And the judges said, "Don't make any difference. If you approved it as a residence there," then the thing here is, any place that a resident who was in a wheelchair could live, this, this type of facility could happen. Go ahead.
Yeah, your decision on the 2,500-foot distance requirement is not making any kind of a decision or statement on the suitability of that facility for an adult family home. That is the responsibility of the licensing agency and it's just not a factor in this decision-making process and the more likely. decision-making process. And the more likely legal liability exposure is in violating the ADA and the Fair Housing Accommodations Act by denying an exception to the 2,500-foot limitation.
Does the city have any liability in this situation for the care of the individuals in that home if the state is a licensing agent?
The state issues the license, the state inspects the facility, determine whether it meets state standards. It's not up to the city. The city is not in that business.
So presumably, the first people to be sued would be the Hendricks Corporation, followed by the state.
Sure, no one's, I mean, they're operating the facility. But the city is not making any kind of a decision on the adequacy of the house on that property.
Okay, Lori's had some time. Scott, did you have anything else?
Nothing further from Mary.
Can I respond to his, since it was directed at me? I just have a couple things that I want to point out. Modifications can be made to a home to accommodate handicapped or wheelchair-bound residents. And in regard to, which keeps coming up my profits or how much I'm charging, if the citizens would do a little research on these private homes, they would find that we're very moderately priced. There are others that are priced even higher for those that can afford it and want this kind of care. I have a one-to-two staffing ratio, and, which brings me to the point that you have to do your research on profit and loss, too, with a business like this. I pay $800 a month on insurance alone, liability insurance. So there's great expense in this. I pay $288 on staffing dollars a day. So it's there, and that's just the tip of the iceberg, so...
Who else on the council wants to speak or ask questions?
I have a statement, but I'd also like to hear a little more from Tammy Erskine.
Okay.
Go ahead, let her first, and then I'll say.
I thought we enclosed comment.
Well, I'm going to give some discretion here. Is that what you want to do? You want her to come up and speak again?
Yeah, real briefly, and then I'll make another statement.
All right. Why don't you be seated? I don't know. We'll see.
I don't have anything specifically that I want to say, but I want to ask a question. And I guess as a tax-paying citizen, I see that Lori is a little bit antsy to get this done and over. And I guess I just want to ask the council, where are our rights as citizens up there? I've been living there for six years. I pay taxes. I have quite a bit invested in Hudson. And I don't feel like the city council is, I feel like you're defending and coming that it's okay for this to go in, and I don't see any, what about us up there as people that have lived there for six years? This person doesn't even own the house yet. I have owned my house, been there for six years, and I'm just asking the city council to take into consideration the fact that, what are our rights? I don't hear anything about my rights. And that's what I'd like to know. Thank you.
Apparently, since they don't have any rights, right?
And that's the frustration, is we're trying, that's what we keep hearing.
Yeah, my, I'm telling you what the law is. That's my job. And both, and I've told you several times, so...
Well, I think deception has been, that's my little statement, deception on both the previous owner and the property, and Hendricks Group. With all concern, the neighbors in Hudson community, I think there's been deception. I think there's been deception by this poorly-advised design business plan. I haven't seen any information from this business, whether we need it or not, but we're asked here to review an exception, and I don't see any business plan. I think it's been poorly conceived. I think it's been rushed through without concern to the neighbors. And I really think, how could you consciously continue to operate a business in a neighborhood that doesn't want you there? I don't understand that. And quite frankly, I think it's just bad business. And I'm going to vote no.
Okay, who else? Alan, we haven't heard from you yet. Do you have anything to say?
Randy, my comment, my answer to you is, when a business comes into town, I don't believe it's up to the city council to look at their business plan and see whether or not, how much money they're going to make. It's an individual's right to open a business and do their business without...
But having to tell the city council how much money they're going to make, whether or not they're welcome in the community or not welcome in the community, I think is, when Mr. Erskine came and built his building, we didn't say, "Give us your business plan so we can see whether or not we should allow you to go there." Yeah, we did. No, we didn't.
Yep.
Well, I was here, I sure didn't see a business plan.
We had a stack of papers to go through. We had conditions put on his parking lot.
Exactly. But what I'm saying is, we don't ask businesses that come in, "How much money are you going to make?"
That's not what I'm asking.
Well, you said you wanted a business plan.
Yeah, business plan. I want to see, the house is not compatible for what they're trying to do.
Okay. Well, I guess...
All right. Well, let's hear Alan's comments, and we're not going to turn it into a back-and-forth.
But the last, the thing that I want to, with all due respect to Tammy, I believe we are trying to follow your rights. We also have to consider the rights of the people who own that property. So we're trying to balance that out. I don't think we are disregarding, we haven't even taken a vote yet.
The owner of the property isn't here.
Right. Well, that's my point, is the fact that if you don't own the property, I don't know, I don't know how you tell somebody else what they should do with their property. And that's my concern. So that's all I have to say.
We do that all the time. It's called zoning. Mr. Mayor, I'd just have to make a motion so we can properly have a discussion after motion.
That'd be great.
See if I get a second. My motion is to deny this application.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny the application. I guess, why don't we hear from anyone who hasn't spoken yet? That'd be probably Pam and Lee. If you, or Lee, were you finished?
Well, I think that the frustration here, on my part, is, I agree that you're sitting in that chair saying that because of all these laws, you have no rights. I mean, that is just plain frustrating. You're like, "I bought this property. I think I should have property rights." Yet I'm looking at all the reviews from all the councils going, "We don't." And I know, to me, that's extremely frustrating. So... I had, but I did have one question of the attorney. How many restrictions can we put on this property? One of my greatest concerns is when a business opens in a residential area, and then it starts to expand. How far can this expand, and how big can you eventually become a home into a comforts of home, because you're there now, and now you can do whatever you want?
Hey, the conditions that the Plan, well, the Plan Commission put on their recommendation is that any change in licensing would require coming back to the council for an exception. And the fact is that they have applied only for licensing as an adult family home. Under the statute, that's three to four adults. That's what they're limited to. If they were to change that under the Plan recommendation, Plan Commission recommendation, they would need to come back.
Uh-huh.
Now, I can't tell you, I mean, the operating rules will be the same. In other words, ADA, FHA take, supersede state law and local law under the conditions we've already discussed. But for the present application, it's limited to three to four adults.
So does that put me in the position, if they say, "Well, we want to tear the house down and put a giant building there," and because of ADA and the Disabilities Act, they can do that? Because will I then have no vote at that time either?
This is a highly regulated and highly definition-based type of use. So I can't tell you, the regulations will be different based on the number of residents. Up to, I think, the community-based residential facilities, I'm not sure if that's eight or 12. I just, I mean, you really have to look at the law, how it applies to each situation. So I can't answer your question specifically. It will depend on what the regulations are with respect to that facility. As soon as it gets too big, I'm guessing it would not be permitted, you know, the law would not require that it be located in a residential zone. Denny, may, do you have a handle on what types of?
CBR, CBR app can be permitted up to 12 residents.
Okay.
That's speculative. At this point, whatever happened.
And it's just in respect to Tammy's comment about property rights and what rights do the residents have. You know, I, after sitting through the planning meeting, I was trying to envision what that would be like in my neighborhood. And I do have neighbors where oxygen is delivered. I came to the conclusion, I guess I would be okay with it. And then I drove up into the neighborhood where this house is located, and I realized how large the lots are, how far the house is back from the street, the fact that it's a three-car garage with three parking spots, plus looks like two off to the side. And I had a hard time understanding where the concern was with traffic. The house is located very close to the entrance of that neighborhood, such that traffic that goes to that house doesn't go past much of many of the other neighbors. So the issue of nuisance, and none of us have rights as to who moves in next door to us. I mean, that's just, the house goes up for sale, and you hope and pray that someone moves in who takes care of the house and is a good neighbor. But none of us really has a right to say, "Who can move in next door to us?" Whether they're going to open a business in their house. It obviously can't be retail, but someone might be working from their home. I just, I think we have to be careful about understanding where our rights end and where someone else's rights begin. So I won't be supporting the motion.
Anyone else like to speak to the motion before we vote?
You know, I would like to ask a question, if I can, about the, there was a comment made about the cliff. If someone went off the cliff, I think...
Yeah.
Did you make?
I did.
Now, if there, if the license indicates that a fence needs to be put up, and that does not fit within our zone, Denny, can you talk about where the city would be in that if there, if an exception needs to be made to a zoning?
NR 118, in a national security way, stipulates that due to the ADA, that the city of Hudson can issue an administrative permit to allow reasonable accommodation for persons with disabilities. So if this could be shown that that is an accommodation for persons with disabilities, the city of Hudson can issue an administrative permit, and doesn't require approval by the DNR, doesn't require a variance procedure.
We'd like to make one comment about the Plan Commission meeting. Denny did tremendous amount of homework, for which he ought to be congratulated, and gave his best thoughts on it. There were three of us at the Plan Commission from the city council. None of us have spoken about that meeting since that time, at least I haven't with anyone. The meeting went almost three hours long. There were three members of the Plan Commission present, basically just a minimum forum. During that period of time, there were three different motions made, none of which received a second. Denny's good work was, I think, kind of slighted in that by the end of the three-hour, almost three-hour period, basically the Plan Commission members voted to approve with the conditions, simply, I think, just to go home. And I think that's the reason that the next day I was approached by a Plan Commission member, who asked me to do further finding of fact, asked for a postponement of this, which I did ask for and did not receive, so that more could be discovered about this process, about this property. I am happy to hear Denny say that a fence can be erected without getting DNR permission, because nobody else can do that up there. And it would be necessary for this house, and would absolutely have to be incorporated in the conditions, I believe, should this allowed to go through. As I said, I, for years, have been intimately familiar with that property. And Lori has it exactly right. There is a large lawn separating the house from the road, and that's because the house is right on the cliff. And it's a very short trip over that cliff. And for any of those residents, I could easily see that happen. I fear for their lives. I fear for the citizens of Hudson and our pocketbooks should we get embroiled in a lawsuit of any kind. My overriding consideration, other than safety, I guess, I guess safety is number one, but number two is, I'm not going to throw my fellow Hudsonites under the bus so that somebody can make a buck. That's why I'm voting no.
Anyone else? You mean you're voting yes. It's your motion.
Excuse me, yes, I'm sorry. Voting against.
I just, I go back to the interesting comment that if it wasn't within 2,500 feet, we wouldn't even be having this discussion. I thought that was a, I mean, all the points that we brought up would be of no consequence.
If it were in lots of different locations in the city of Hudson, we wouldn't be having this discussion, and I wouldn't have an argument with it. I have an argument with putting people of diminished capacity on top of a 200-foot cliff overlooking a river.
Which can be fixed with a fence.
Well, it turns out, Karina Denny, it can, and that should be part of the recommendations from the Planning Commission. I can't imagine, I don't know why they're not there. But that really should be, and I would, if my motion is defeated, I would hope that somebody would make a motion along those lines, for the safety of the residents of those houses, that house and that property. But you have to drive by a lot of other homes that are for sale. There are over 500 homes for sale right now in the Hudson area, and you have to drive by a lot of them to get to this one.
So your argument stands, if that's removed from your argument, your motion stands on what?
My motion stands on, first of all, is the safety issue, but I believe that what we have, what I, my personal opinion, is what I have heard from Mary Hendricks, all due respect to her, is not a plan for care of seniors so much as a marketing plan. And she, what I'm hearing from her is an opportunity to execute a marketing plan. In her previous position, as she said herself, she is, she was not in charge of patient care. She was not connected with patients. She was a marketing person. I would say that that's fine, and I, you know, that's, I have no argument with that. But I think that we're seeing a marketing plan in a house deliberately picked to appeal to people who will pay $10,000 a month to house their family members. It's picked for its country-club setting.
Anyone else? My final comment is that there is definitely concern that this might lead to litigation. I think on the one hand, it's probably a valid concern that were there to be an injury or fatality, a lot of parties may be brought into such a lawsuit. However, that's a speculative situation. A denial, as I was informed by the mayor of Marshfield, who about a year ago, they denied one, will usually lead to immediate litigation. It's not a maybe. You are jumping into litigation if you choose to deny. Multiple cities have been through this. Do you have comments on that?
Yeah, I think if you deny the exception, it will be litigated, and the city will lose, and you will pay attorney's fees, plus your own attorney's fees and the applicant's attorney's fees.
Now, that being said, I'm extremely sensitive to the property rights. I disagree with the court rulings on this. Not that we should integrate and deinstitutionalize, I think that's a, that's a good principle. But as I said, I mean, you have liberal judges on the Circuit Court of Appeals that are essentially making law. That's what they did. They made the law. Nobody voted for them. They were appointed by Carter, Clinton, and George H.W. Bush, and the three of them made the law. We live with it now. There's going to be a lot more of that. Okay? It's not right. The US Supreme Court recently trampled on property rights. There's too little respect for property rights and too much legislating from the bench. And you don't like it, I don't like it, but it is what it is. And it will cost all our city taxpayers. I did ask this, bring me an instance of documented decrease in property values. I asked Denny to look into this. I've asked people that have called me, bring me an instance where you've got documented decrease in property values. And don't tell me right now that your property is worth less than it was in 2007, because all of them are. And I've yet to see it. And I know that's a valid concern. Anyone would be concerned. That's the whole basis of zoning and laws of that sort, to protect property rights. But in this case, we have very little discretion.
Call for the question.
Question, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, say no.
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 I heard three noes.
No.
And a fourth. So the motion fails, two in favor and four oppose, floor is open. Do you wish to postpone this item for further study, wish to take some action?
I'll make the motion to approve the, move to approve the request.
Do you want to do something about the fence issue?
No.
We have a motion to approve the committee recommendation.
Could we add some other additions to it?
Certainly.
Such as no physical changes to the property as far as growth potential, that it stays as is.
Well, before you two start discussing that, there's a motion on the table. It's waiting for a second, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now, your question is, do you want to add something?
I'd be interested in adding something to look at how it operates with the neighbors because the neighbors' concerns are absolutely valid. So how do we solve that, some of those issues? The, we've been stated that this will operate as a home. The neighbors coming and going as they would. If we look at the fact that I can have a emergency vehicle, as it was last month, called to my house, as granted, there'll be maybe, maybe an increase here. But if it's operated as a home, if it's not turned into a commercial property, which means, you know, additions to make it a commercial property, that stays as a home. That's one of the biggest things that we've had issues with when they stick. We've asked to have houses turned into, even one downtown here, turned into a commercial property and we said no to it. So we don't want this to become a commercial property. And then the next one is just to encourage them to be part of that association so that they are part of the neighborhood. I know we can't require that, but we could certainly request it. Because then they are part of the neighborhood, not just a separate entity. Please, to attempt to address some of the neighborhood concerns.
Did we not hear at planning that they can't exceed for?
Correct.
Without relicensing our, this is a separate issue from the physical structure of the home.
I have difficulty with that because you, any other homeowner in that neighborhood can apply for a building permit and if that building permit meets the requirements both of the building code and the, you know, setback and so forth, they're entitled to add on to their home. Now, these, this facility can't exceed the, can't exceed what it's licensed for. For three to four adult residents with a caregiver and up to seven hours of nursing care. But to limit any physical change to the prop, to the facility, number one, they may not be able to do that just because they've got to comply with the ADA. Number two, we are putting a condition on them that no other property owner in that neighborhood has to meet.
Like we did with the parking, frankly, we did that with the parking.
That was by a more of an.
They offered it.
Yes, they offered it. It wasn't so much imposed as it was agreed to because they didn't intend to have any cars in the street anyway.
So then I ask this question, will, if it comes up for some sort of building addition and it comes to, comes through, are we going to be bound by the same thing, like you must approve this because it's an ADA request?
We have to look at the, or you will have to look at the facts as they are when it's presented and what the law is as it applies to those facts. I can't speculate as to what they're going to.
You're following my concern?
Possibly, yes, but the condition that the plan commission put on, limiting it to their licensure, which is three to four, and requiring them to come back if there's any change in the license, I think addresses that.
Okay.
Motion to amend the initial motion.
Go ahead.
Move to add to the staff recommendations that a restrictive structure such as a fence be placed between the house and the ridge so that residents cannot go over the edge.
The motion to amend, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Have a second, discussion on the motion?
I think the question I have about that is, how is that going to look in the neighborhood? To put up a big six or eight-foot fence in the neighborhood? I think that's going to be, you talk about bringing your property values down. I think that's.
Does that fall under the nuisance? I mean, you build a fence and it's under your net?
Sure.
I, I, I'll just say, be careful what you ask for and I said it in regards to the, to the objection of emergency vehicles coming in that, you know, if you object and say you can't do it because the gate's there, then watch out because the gate might be gone. It's the same thing here, if you insist on a fence, watch out, there will probably be a fence. And it's not necessarily something you want and we might have an ordinance against it and we, you know, we get asked for an exception. The DNR gets asked, this is a trump card here, there's a trump card that you're not used to playing. It's sort of like you're playing a game that you're not used to. One side has a trump card and the other side doesn't.
I would just comment, we don't require fences be put up on that block for anyone with small children or any elderly person in a home. I don't think we can require that in this, these people are supervised. That's why they carry liability insurance.
I'm putting the safety of the residents over.
That's why they carry insurance.
You know, other considerations.
Yeah, I don't think we're in charge of that.
All right, any other?
I can withdraw my second.
I have concerns about putting that in the motion because then do we put ourselves, if something would happen, then if we, have we included ourselves in, in a situation later if something happens?
I'll withdraw the second.
You want to withdraw your second, is there another second for it? You want to withdraw the whole motion?
No, just if there's no second, there's no.
There's no second?
I think that becomes part of the licensing issue if they require it, if they don't, it's there.
Let's, let's go back, the main motion is about accepting the committee recommendation. Any other discussion?
And were there any additions to it from Lane?
Yeah, I had asked to have the, the request that they be part of the association, consider it. And, but I think we dropped the question of no physical changes because that'll have to come through building requests. But encourage, you know, this will be operated as a home, as for all the other neighbors, so, so it looks and acts like a home. I mean, that's, that's, that's what the neighbors really want and that's what I believe that the caregivers are looking for.
We do have an architectural committee in the, in the associations.
Oh, good, okay.
Well, unless you make that a motion.
I will, I will make that a motion addition to.
Let's be specific about what you're saying. The part about requiring them or suggesting that they join an association, it's a private association. I don't think there's covenants.
We can't?
Well, because I think we heard that some of the residents there had some connection and so never joined and so I assume.
There's other properties that are not a part of the association, they're not required to be. I don't think this council can require this property to be part of the association.
I didn't say require, I said encourage. All right, I've said, said my piece.
Are we, as part of this recommendation, I just want to make clear is, are we making no parking on the entire street then? It says that.
No.
No, this.
Says on the recommendation.
This residence won't use on-street parking. Yeah, that's the way it reads here, Denny, but.
That isn't the intent, was it? I want to make sure.
Well, let's amend that to what we really were talking about there, so we should change that language a little bit. Even that provision to some degree has, say they got lawn service and they got to pull a trailer up on the street and mow the yard for an hour, put the mower back on the trailer and move away. Are we going to be up there and be the police to say you can't have your lawn mower trailer on the street for 30 minutes while they're mowing the yard trying to keep the yard looking nice? I mean, there's some provisions that just lack common sense here, so.
You're having a graduation party.
Right, you know, the general example is not to have employees on the street.
Yep, okay. Anyone else like to speak? We've got a motion, we're about ready to vote.
I just want to clarify that. So we are not going to allow any parking on Crest Street Drive. Is that what the intent of this motion was? Okay, then I'd like to strike that.
Well, the operator offered that they would have no vehicles parked on the street.
Okay, I think that needs to be clarified in that recommendation. It's the operator of that.
That the residents and employees wouldn't park on the street.
Okay, I would like that to be clarified.
Is that, I don't think we can force you, but you volunteered it, is that what you meant to say?
But if Urskins wanted to have people over and they park in the street, we're not talking about the rest of the residents, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Questions?
One last comment, I did during my fact finding this past week, discussed the location of this house with other healthcare professionals. When I described the location in the nearby bluff, cliff, whatever you like to call it, hill, uniformly without exception, they thought we were crazy to even, even be discussing it. They thought we were just crazy.
Yep. Laurie?
Well, I was just going to mention, there's a nursing home in Hudson with a walking path around the facility and there's a hill on the backside of it. You know, that path is used by residents. Let her call.
All right.
I guess the only question we didn't ask is, well, if we were to deny this, we'd be talking about how many thousands of dollars for the litigation fees? That's the other.
I have a question.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no.
No.
Let's have a division, roll call.
Morset?
No.
O'Malley?
No.
Wyland?
Yes.
Virchill?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Bokum?
Yes.
The two in favor, motion passes. Let's move on to the rest of our agenda. Let's go to the finance committee agenda and the first item is applications for operators licenses. We have two applications for us, staff recommendation and the finance committee recommendation is for approval.
I'll recuse myself.
Mr. Morset is refused. These are regular operators licenses to run from tomorrow, June, pardon me, February 3rd to June 30th.
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item is the, to consider amending the municipal code to increase building and zoning fees. Ordinance 2-09, we discussed this at our last council meeting, or at the last finance committee meeting and we brought it back. There have been no adjustments to these fees for a number of years. David Gray, building inspector, brought this forward that in his whole time. How long's it been, seven years we haven't? So nine years at least, we haven't adjusted these. He brought the committee documentation of the costs and staff time involved and so we are recommending these increases.
Move for approval.
A second.
Do we need to suspend the rules on that one?
Oh, yes, we do.
Move to suspend?
We have a motion to suspend the rules and a second. Any discussion on the suspension? Roll call vote?
Roll call?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Virchill?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended, we're ready to consider adoption of the ordinance.
Motion to adopt ordinance 2-09.
We have a motion and a second to adopt, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And the ordinance is adopted. The next item is to approve updated job descriptions and compensation for St. Croix EMS positions. The finance committee recommended approval. There are two aspects of this. One is amending the job descriptions to add job duties to each of the chief as well as the full-time paramedics, essentially distributing the duties that were handled in 2008 by Wes Halverson, who was an assistant chief, I think was his.
Operations.
Operations chief. In his absence, and the decision was made not to refill that position, in his absence, those duties have been shared by the others. Eric Christensen's recommendation is that, in addition to the 4% salary increase that all the non-represented city employees got for 2009, that our paramedic staff get an additional 5% for these shared duties.
And in addition to, to eliminate the position.
And to eliminate the position.
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, any discussion?
Eric, either you want to tell us or say? You don't have to if you don't want to. I'm just wondering if there's anything you want to.
Yeah, this is just in response, we decided not to fill Wes's position and utilize our full-time employees that we have out there now. It's almost acting an equivalent of what the sergeant does for the police department. They're going to be responsible during their shift for the trucks, the staffing, workings of the departments.
Ben, any, anything you, is this okay with you, anything you want to add?
I think we're all for it.
Okay. Move to approve.
Or did we already have that? We already had a motion to approve.
Sorry. Scott, catch up.
Any other discussion?
Still real in shock.
Might just point out for the listening audience that for a variety of reasons, but by not filling this position and because of the decreased health insurance costs, our salary and benefit costs for the EMS will go from last year's 341,000 for the year to this year, now with this change, 269,000 so that there's a savings of over $70,000, which is pretty substantial. It's, it's about 20%. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item is the application of Barley's Pizza and Pasta LLC for a Class B beer license, doing business as Barley's Pizza and Pasta at 1830 Webster Street, Suite 150. The staff recommendation and the committee recommendation is to approve contingent on successful completion of the building inspection and proof of the payment of the property taxes, which were due the other day. We've been told verbally that they've been paid, but until there's proof coming from the county, we, our ordinance prohibits us from renewing the license. So we need those two contingencies.
And this is normal property taxes, this isn't any back pay, it's what comes due on the 31st, right?
Nancy?
That's right.
Yeah.
I'll move to approve on contingencies that we received notification.
I'll second. And the building inspection.
And the building, yeah, all the completions of the building inspections.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Their property taxes are $16,000 a year? That's all current?
It's for the parcel. The whole building. It ran part of it.
Okay. The whole parcel, not, not just.
It's their part.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item is to review bids and consider awarding the 2009 tree and stump removal contract. This is routine. Finance recommended approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, Mr. Morset.
Was there an increase from the year before? I know we had an issue with this last year, no?
No.
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 Duh. Compared to private pay on this, this is a phenomenal.
Right.
Yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Next item is the recommendation for hiring a public safety facility study consultant and to review the funding source.
I can start out just with, we interviewed four different possible consultants, and every one of them did just a phenomenal job. Their presentations were terrific. Every one of them probably would have done us a great job. So the decision was difficult to go through. I think that we came down to a couple of, looking, I, I'd written up a couple of things. I don't know if everybody has an answer to it, but we came down to AK and Frisbee as our last two choices, and after checking references, good references on both, with some of the work that Frisbee has done, we're recommending that Frisbee be awarded the contract.
Some background.
And that's a motion.
It sounded like a motion.
That's a motion.
And a second, good. Some background, for those that haven't been following this, there was approximately a year ago, a committee formed a task force of one council member plus staff who worked together in collaboration to study the needs for buildings and space for the police, fire, and EMS. Out of that came some recommendations, and the council decided to pursue hiring a consultant. We did this bid process, RFP and proposals, and this is what's come out of it. The scope of what's being done here is to look at site selection, look at the, the space needs again, and reconfirm the work that was done by that task force, and to begin to look at potential configurations. I asked about other, whether there could be combined city facilities, and they showed examples. Each of them had examples of that, including combined public safety and library facilities, which was one that I was interested in, as well as others. So there's a lot of things on the table. As to Frisbee, they made a strong presentation. They had probably among the best local knowledge, I think.
Yep. And the, Frisbee is actually, as the lead, will, is also using collaborative design group, who has a lot of high marks, as well as a bonus draw, knowing the intimate knowledge of our, our local systems.
I do have a question regarding the funding. The vote on this, Betty, was six months, is six months old. Is that excess bond fund still available?
There's still approximately $30,000 available.
Okay, and we're talking 19 of that 30 here. So we're okay. Thanks.
Correct. The funding source that the finance committee recommended was to use that as had been determined in the past, and it's still there. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Close, say no. Motion is adopted. Number nine is consider advertising for bids for possible 2009 lawn mowing services. The issue sheet is submitted by Tom Zooli, Director of the Public Works and Parks Department. This came from both discussions at the Public Works Committee in 2008 and discussions at the Finance Committee. We sent it back for a little fine tuning last time, and we have now broken the bid package into six sub options that you can find. The numbering's a little different here, but if you go, it goes one through eight first, and then it starts over again in the second group. If you got to page six, it says bid options and mowing services. And so our parks, trails, and municipal buildings have been broken down into six sub packages here. And there's also a frequency standard for each of them that varies from once a week for the irrigated, higher-traffic, higher-visibility parks, up to twice a week in the high, rapid grass growth period. And then weekly is the standard for most of the parks, every other week for less-used parks and some trails. Questions?
Here in finance, once we get these totals or bids, excuse me, then we're going to compare those with the investments we've already made in cost. Okay.
Mr. O'Malley?
Yes, there's no dollar figure attached to the, to this, but I assume we're paying, oh, we're paying out of pocket. It's just the advertising for a couple of times. It's about $200 approximately for this. Is that correct, usually?
Depends on the size of the ad and that, but it's.
Okay. Randy, are you selling any advertising tonight? Okay. Well, I'm going to assume it's up to 200, I'm going to say up to $250, and I move that we authorize the publication solicitation of bids.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize solicitation and advertisement for bids, up to $250.
I forgot to add, this has got to come out of somebody's budget besides my own. Public Works.
What, are we, if it's more than 250?
Yeah.
I'm just, I don't, I don't know right offhand what it's going to be because of the size.
Well, then let's keep it so it's not, let's just keep that side down. I mean, we've, clearly, anyone who applies for this successfully will have already done, of course, in constitutional law, just getting through this. So I think that we can save all that stuff for when they actually get the bid package.
There's a lot of resistance to change in many, many times in government, and just merely the suggestion of doing things differently sometimes leads to some digging in of heels. I would point out, we, we changed our procurement policy and put more emphasis on soliciting bids than advertisement. Advertisement's great. You can run the smallest ad you want to and pat yourself on the back and say, we ran the ad twice. You could make it so small no one sees it, and then feel like, well, we didn't get any bids. Really, what we've tried to put the emphasis on now is soliciting bids, which Tom's already been in contact with some contractors, including one who mows all the parks for the City of Somerset, the school district for Somerset, and the school district for Osceola. So there are contractors out there that are watching what we're doing. I don't, you know, and we'll, we'll try to seek them out in addition to paying for advertising in our fine Hudson Stars group.
It'll be on the website as well, so if people have been following this, they can put it on the website.
And there's an advantage in advertising, and that is, these smaller operators may not get solicited. I think we talked about that. I think that's a big value.
I think a blend of the two is really the best.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Close, say no. The motion carries. We'll move on to. Communications and recommendations of the mayor. You had in your packet the resignation letter of Public Utility Commission President Tim Caruso. Tim has served on the Public Utility Commission for many years, approaching 20, and served as the president for a number of years, and served on the Plan Commission for a number of years as the representative of the utility. And so we give him credit for long service and dedication to the Utility Commission. And because of that resignation, there's an opening there. The state law and local ordinance says that the council should elect a replacement. I'd like to nominate for you Kevin Vance, longtime city resident. He's a business owner, has a lot of management experience, and I think he'll bring something to the board that they can use. And so I'd like to forward that name and ask for your approval.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. The second item then is the mayor's appointment of a Public Utility Commission member to serve on the City of Hudson Plan Commission, and I'd like to appoint Kevin Vance to that position. Kevin has a great interest in participating right now, partly because we are in the process of redoing our comprehensive plan for the first time since 1993. In addition to his business experience, he studied planning and land use in college, actually worked in the field, and worked on the preparation of comprehensive plan early in his career out of college, and worked under Elmer L. Anderson, a well-known figure in the state of Minnesota as a mentor at that time, number of years ago, but he's very interested, and I think he's got something to bring to the Plan Commission. And so I would like to appoint him to that. I'm not 100% sure, but I'd like your approval of that. If, it'd be quicker to ask for your approval.
Can you tell us the nature of his business, because, if that might impact on the Plan Commission? You said he's, several times, you said he's a businessman here in Hudson.
I can. I think his business is called TJ Management.
Oh, okay. I mean, he's not in the process of selling land or anything like that that might have a conflict with planning.
Help me here. Taco John's.
Taco John's?
Formerly Mr. Movies for a number of years.
Okay.
No longer owns Mr. Movies but a number of years. Other commercial properties and.
Apple House Buildings.
Okay. Thank you. Well, move for approval.
Motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Lori. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say no. And I should have mentioned that it would be to fill out the remainder of Mr. Caruso's term. Point of information, the pond hockey has been postponed until 2010 because of logistics and getting it arranged, and because the hockey players already had their games and schedules set such that they weren't going to get the participation unless it was planned further in advance. So that was to be part of the Hot Air Fair, and that won't, look like that'll be happening. But Hot Air Fair will be happening, and encourage you all to come and participate. Our big, great, and somewhat unique winter event, something for everyone. Hopefully, we have good weather.
Forecast calls for temperatures in the 30s and 40s.
Be great.
So that'll be.
And no wind, it'd be just about.
Well, as long as we're in session, we can't guarantee that.
It's been a few years since the year we played mud volleyball because all the snow was melting. Next up is reports of city officials, quarterly report of the city clerk. On consent. What did I miss? Okay, I missed the C. Communications from any older person. Anyone? Communications from the city attorney? No, city administrator?
Couple quick updates. We did implement dental insurance at the cost of the employee. That is something new that we have, but it's going to be a plain cost. We've made our initial payment to the HRA for those employees that are qualified for it. So that's, both those things have taken place, so.
That's it. I think we're ready for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, more adjournments.